Going to call this meeting into order, City Planning Commission at 1:40 PM. We'll do roll call. Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Flick, present. Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Joshi Gupta.
Present.
Commissioner Lund.
Present.
Commissioner Steg.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Present.
Commissioner Whittry.
Present.
Thank you. My first order of business is to adopt the meeting minutes of the September 27th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting notes from the September 27th meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's no discussion. We'll vote the machines.
Okay. Oh, good. I thought it was just.
Commissioner Whitry made the motion seconded by Commissioner Alexander. Vote on machines.
Okay. Now we've signed it.
Motion passes. Commissioner Stewart, I think you have not voted. Commissioner Stewart. Oh, you have two. Okay. Okay. Just one. Just one person is here today. Okay, first up is zoning docket 7622. I'm sorry. I didn't read the hearing rules. A little off topic today. I'm going to go ahead and read through this. The City Planning Commission has drafted revised rules governing the procedures to be followed at public hearings. These rules have. Wait, I'm up. Now I have the right document. The City Planning Commission has established certain rules governing the procedures to be followed at public hearings. Before speaking, each person shall give their name, address, and state whom he or she is representing. Proponents for the proposal will speak first for a period of 10 minutes. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents or other interested parties will speak second for a period of 15 minutes. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Proponents will be allowed a period of six minutes for rebuttal. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents will not be allowed to rebut. No material, written matter, photographs, maps, etc. will be accepted by the commission or its staff at any time during this public hearing. This procedure shall be accepted at such time when the presiding officer shall, with the approval of the commission members present, extend such time. And with that, we will now go to our first zoning docket 7622.
Zoning docket 7622 is for a property located at 65 Fountain Blue Drive, 2624 Pine Street, and 2700 Lower Line Street. This request is for a zoning change from an H U R D 1 Historic Urban 2 Family Residential District to H U B 1 Historic Urban Neighborhood Business District in a conditional use to permit a commercial use over 5,000 square feet in the A U B 1 Historic Urban Neighborhood Business District in a small multifamily affordable short-term rental interim zoning district. The subject site, a permanently closed school encompasses the whole square of 65 and is developed with a three-story institutional structure, approximately 47,058 square feet. The applicant, Saint Rita Roman Catholic Church, is proposing to adapt the structure into commercial offices, which is disallowed under the existing use. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from H U R D 1 District to the most restrictive zoning district, A U B 1 District, which would permit the redevelopment of the school into office space. As the site exceeds the zoning district's commercial use limitation of 5,000 square feet, the applicant is also requesting a conditional use to permit the redevelopment of the entire structure for commercial use. Staff do not find the proposed use to meet the standards for approval in Article 4 of the Comprehensive Zone Ordinance or be consistent with the master plan's residential low development pre-war future land use designation. Therefore, staff recommend denial.
Thank you. I have two cards in favor, but neither listed as the applicant. Is there an applicant? You could just come and say your name, address, please.
Hi, Todd Gennardo, Dennis Show Law Firm, here on behalf of Saint Rita Roman Catholic Church. Address is 201 St. Charles, Suite 3920. We're here today on behalf of Saint Rita's requesting that the commission consider a change from H U R D 1 to H U B 1 zoning with a conditional use for additional zoning, additional space over 5,000 square feet for office space, as the staff has briefed you on. Couple of things that I'd like to point out is that while we've read the staff report and we understand where the staff is coming from in relation to master plan, we view this a little bit different than a traditional office or commercial use for various reasons. First, obviously, the property has been used by Saint Rita's for Catholic uses, primarily a school, since the early 1940s. As many of you know, this area is highly used by the archdiocese and other Catholic ministries. In fact, the archdiocese has just two blocks away its main office building on Wamsley Avenue. The Notre Dame Seminary is just behind that. There's also Saint, Saint, I'm sorry, Dominican High School and Saint Rita's Church across the street from this property. So again, we view this a little different in the sense that what Saint Rita's is looking to do is extend the Catholic presence within the community. The office spaces that are intended to be used are going to be used for Catholic purposes. Those are in particularly Catholic charities, archdioceses of New Orleans, the archdiocese of New Orleans cemeteries offices, the archdiocese of New Orleans archives, some IT offices, and some other support offices. Also, school foods and nutrition services, which is also an archdiocese ministry. And so, in other words, you know, clearly there is a commercial element to this. However, it's a, it's a commercial use that's consistent with the other Catholic uses within the, within the neighborhood. Additionally, we've met with, Saint Rita's has met with the neighborhood associations. On more than one occasion, we held the required NPP meeting, but prior to that, we met with, with, with the neighborhood association, then held the NPP meeting, additionally had several meetings after that to hear out some concerns from the neighborhood and, and tried to work with the neighbors to incorporate a proposal that we think really works for the neighborhood. I think you're going to hear from the neighborhood association, a representative of the neighborhood association here in just a few minutes, so I'll lead it to that. But bottom line, as we've been working with the neighborhood, the, the uses, again, we think are going to be consistent with the, with the existing uses. I'll speak also a little bit to the staff's comment that we have selected H U B 1, which allows only 5,000 square feet of office space. The purpose for that was, it was really intentional, obviously, because we heard from the neighbors, look, you know, we're pretty comfortable with the Catholic Church, but we're a little, we're more uncomfortable with potential future uses. So we'd prefer you seek a conditional use application rather than resort on it. Unfortunately, conditional use application in this, in the existing H U R D 1 designation does not allow for any office space, so that was not an option. So intentionally, we chose the most restrictive zoning designation and then asked for a conditional use over that 5,000 square foot limitation. The, is another component of this I'd like to point out is, is the building is 47,000 square feet. However, based on the floor plans that we've submitted to the, to the staff that were prepared by Stephen Finnegan, an architect hired by Saint Rita's, approximately 27,000 square feet would be used for office space.
Good time.
If I could just, one more, one more comment.
Very quickly.
Sure. It's, it's really 27,000 square feet with about 8,000 square feet being reserved for community uses. Moro Center and the kitchen would be reserved for community uses at the request of the neighborhood. That's committed. It would not be office space. Again, a large part of this would also be archives. I, you know, we don't necessarily view that traditionally as commercial space. So we'd ask that you, that you take into account the community's response, some of the things that are so mentioned, and we request that you recommend approval to the council. I'll be here to answer any questions if necessary. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the speaker. Can you speak in context of what the, the current use of the building is as of right now?
It's vacant.
It's been vacant. How long has it been vacant?
Since this school year ended in June.
Since last June?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Could you just walk us through the 47,000 square feet and then 27,000 would be used for office space and 8,000 for community space? What would be the remainder?
So there are, so there's 8,000, let's see, let me, let me kind of break this down for you. So there's 47,000 square feet. That includes office space corridors, storage, mechanical rooms, so forth and so on. Approximately 27,000 is actually 20,692 square feet as calculated by the architect would be office space. That also includes archive space as well. And then there is, there's a 7,417 square feet that would be utilized for community space. The remainder of that would, the difference between that would be corridors and mechanical rooms and that kind of thing.
So every space has been accounted for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Richard Wedman.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Wedman. I live at 2517 Lower Line Street, which is a half a block from the school. And I represent myself. I, I've spoken to a number of the neighbors, although I cannot speak for them today, but just be aware that I've discussed some of these situations with them. Let me give you my, my major concern, or my major concern. Right now, the school is vacant. And as far as I understand it, it cannot be used for anything except a school at the present time. We just closed the school because of lack of attendance. So therefore, if this zoning thing does not pass, the school will remain empty. Needless to say, the neighbors aren't particularly wild about having an empty school building in the neighborhood because it's going to deteriorate. We all know that. Secondly, the, as I understand it, the archdiocese doesn't own the building. The parish does. So right now, it's empty and therefore it's an expense of the part of the parish to maintain the building, but we have no revenue. If the archdiocese rents it, not only does it become occupied again and in commercial use, but the parish also gets revenue from that, which then allows them financing to maintain the building and also will help with the financing of the parish as well, which is positive. This is a win-win situation for everybody. And so I encourage you to, very much so, please approve this change. Otherwise, I think we're in for a very difficult situation with this building in the future. Any questions? I have 21 seconds left with nothing else to say, except thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, I have Catherine Cargo.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Cargo. I live at 7836 Wamsley Avenue in, in the Fountain Blue neighborhood. And I'm here representing the Fountain Blue Improvement Association. I'm the chair of the Infrastructure Committee. I've been a resident of the neighborhood since 1985 for nearly 40 years that I've lived there. Saint Rita's has been an anchor in the neighborhood. They've been an excellent neighbor to the neighborhood. They pledge in our meetings that we've had with the parish, they've pledged to keep the building and have an adaptive reuse of that structure, which we, which we approve of in the Fountain Blue Improvement Association. We see the use of the building as being a low-impact use. It's compatible with a low office pressure on the neighborhood. We're currently, as the previous speaker mentioned, kind of the nexus of the Catholic business in, in the city. We have the archdiocese, we have the seminary, we have Dominican, we have the Chateau Notre Dame, we have Saint Rita's Church. It's, it's probably six to eight blocks of Catholic activity in our neighborhood. It's been very unintrusive. I live on Wamsley now, across from the archdiocese, across from the archdiocese offices. They're never a problem, so I don't foresee that as being a problem in our neighborhood. Also, we, as a Fountain Blue Improvement Association, appreciate the fact that we would have a community center in the Moro Center. It would give us a place for us to meet and we plan, got some very ambitious activities planned, so we are looking forward to doing that. In conclusion, I just want to say that the Fountain Blue Improvement Association supports the changes in zoning docket 076-22. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now for the cards in opposition. David Madden. Followed by Alvin Bruce Hart.
Good afternoon. My name's David Madden. My wife and I have owned a home on 2800 Broadway for over 30 years. It's a corner of Broadway and Wamsley. I'm in opposition to this for multiple reasons. I'll try and talk as fast as possible. At the corner of Broadway and Wamsley, some years back, the parish put a left turn lane on Earhart down Broadway. We don't have an opportunity to oppose that or anything. That's a parish decision. It goes down. Well, that street's not like State Street or Nashville. It's not a wide street. This is a narrow street and a turn lane off of Earhart with a stoplight and a turn lane was put there. That tenfold increased traffic down that street ruined the street. Trucks, you know, cars, everything was coming down the street. Now, Saint Rita's wants to make this other property, which is diagonally across from my house, into a scenario where it's going to potentially be anything. Now, maybe I'm a little cynical, but I don't necessarily trust the church or anybody when it comes to changing the scenario from this business proposition they're putting to anything they want. Once that zoning is changed, is made, it's done. They can do anything they want. So now they're going to make Wamsley, which that street has had to be fully resurfaced with just the traffic that's in place now because it's a stoplight there on Carrollton and that most people take a left, they cut up and they go to Claiborne. And that street alone has been fully resurfaced twice within the last 20 years. And within the interim, we're talking about, you know, before, before streets in New Orleans get fixed. streets in New Orleans get fixed, it's usually one big pothole. So it is now right in the process of being resurfaced again. So now they're potentially considering adding substantially more traffic into a truly residential area. I, I just, you know, I don't understand it. I mean, these guys want to do something with, am I out of town? Am I sorry? Well, they're about profit. You know, they're not about the neighborhood. They made a business decision to open the school, and now they want to change their mind. Well, heck, you know, a lot of people bought Bitcoin at 60,000, and now it's under 20. Well, I'm sorry for that, but that doesn't mean that I have and our neighbors have to pay for that business decision change. So, you know, they want to make a good decision for the neighborhood, then why don't they just, you know, build single-family homes and sell them in the area? The market's hot as heck. They could do that and be rid of their expense and all that. So I'm sorry. Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the speaker, did you have another point? Was it just the street? Was the issue? Do you have another point?
Yeah, I had a few more, if I have a.
Can you just state those points?
One more point. Okay, well, he said that the, that Mr. Wegman made a statement that this is going to improve money. Okay? This is about finances for him. This is not about the neighborhood. Okay? The neighborhood is not in favor of this from everyone I've spoken to. So I, I don't know where he's coming from, where he's going to focus on, okay, this is a financial windfall for everybody. Well, it's not really good windfall for the neighbors.
And what's the next point?
Sorry, I'm trying to talk fast. Let's see. And they said they talked to the neighborhood a lot. To my knowledge, one meeting. It was one meeting. My wife and I couldn't make it. One meeting with the neighborhood to discuss what they said was a friendly atmosphere, that they were getting input from the neighborhood. One meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question for the gentleman.
Yes.
Over here. When you said the parish went ahead and changed the sign, the turning signals initially, do you mean the parish or Orleans Parish?
Orleans Parish. As Earhart comes down, well, they redid that whole street. And part of that redo, and I don't know if it was just an error on the planning schedule because it made more sense to me to make the turn lane onto Carrollton. But they made a turn lane directly down into a residential area with a light. So they were, a lot of the traffic was trying to take a shortcut.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the parish, the church that was Orleans Parish, just a technical, our understanding. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Brusart.
Hello. My name is Alvin Brusart, 7820 Exeter Street. And I'm here in behalf of myself and for 175 students and their families of St. Rita Catholic Elementary School. Recently, the school was closed. And it was closed by way of Father Patrick Carr, who is here today. His reasons being steady declinement in enrollment and anticipated future financial instability. That's apropos, I guess, for a certified public accountant. What St. Rita Elementary School is in Catholic activities. It's educating minority Catholics in this city. So those reasons that Father Carr posted for a closure of the school is just non-existent. In my opinion, it was contrived, totally calculated, and deliberate action to close that minority school for his purposes as a CPA, as he is working with molestation cases for those wayward and bad behavior priests. Now, there's a, this decision to close, in my opinion, is a unilateral one by Father Patrick Carr. The parish, the, the, the school advisory council had represented to say, hey, let's discuss this thing. There's probably ways and means why this school should not be closed.
You're, you're on time. Would you like Ethel to cede her time to you?
I beg your pardon?
No, never mind. No.
Okay, so you're on time.
You're at time.
I was trying to condense it, but the, I didn't even get to the meat of the matter, except that Father Patrick Carr did not give us a meeting because for fear that he would be exposed as to what he's doing. Kick out these minority students that have been, been propelling that and being educated in that school for all those years. That's part of, that's part of the Catholic work here, to educate children. But he's going to contrive something, put something here that's not right, and stand by, and has the audacity to come in front of you and tell you what a good deal it would be. It's outrageous.
I appreciate you coming. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the speaker?
Sure.
Actually, two questions.
We have one, two questions?
Question.
You said that you, just quickly, you said that you represent 100 and something parents. Is it an organization? Right. You said you represent 170 or so parents. Is that an organization of parents?
I, did that cause, have caused for panic? Is that what you're asking?
Are you representing an organization of parents?
And if no, what I'm doing, I'm doing this satisfying the sentiments.
Okay. And one more question. What is it that qualifies this school to be a minority Catholic school?
You know something, ma'am? If I ask you once or twice from this particular distance.
What is it that qualifies? Why? Why do you say this is a minority Catholic school?
Because it's predominantly black. We do have Caucasian, and we have Hispanic. So actually, it's about the cultural school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that should not be closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Alicia Brusart Sheridan.
Yes, ma'am. Alicia Brusart Sheridan, 7820 Exeter Street. I will also be speaking on behalf of Ethel Brusart and Abram Frye as well. Okay. All right. So little bit to what my dad spoke about. This whole thing was contrived and calculated. My daughters, sixth grade kindergarten, Father Patrick Carr kicked them out of school to top enroll students when I brought up concerns about his misbehavior on Facebook, where he called Black Lives Matters supporters thugs. We're over predominantly minority school. I spoke out against it. He ripped my First Amendment rights. So thank you for allowing me to come here and speak and protest against what he's trying to do. This school has been a school for almost 100 years. He has allowed other schools with less than 50 students and $500,000 in debt to devise a five-year plan. But he said that we could not raise any funds. He wouldn't accept any donors because he was so concerned about the bankruptcy issues and the molestation cases. That was his concern. But when you have a school in your parish, you then become the leader of that school. How then, sir, can you be the leader of this school? And you say and do the things that you have done. I brought those concerns, and when he disenrolled my kids from school on February 14th, I had to file a court ordered injunction to get them back into school two days later. But even with that, he said, you cannot talk to any parents, no verbal communication, no physical communication with any teachers, any parents, any students. Why? Because I brought concerns about what he posted on his social media. I have 91 pages. I wish I would have known that the hearing was going to be today because I would have presented you with a copy of that. I condensed it to a 51-page presentation and shared it with archdioceses and leaders. But I was retaliated against. The emotional trauma that is happening to the students of our school, the parents, the school was thriving. He had no connection with the kids. He can't even name two kids until he kicked mine out, who, by the way, were two of the top students in the school, but he wouldn't know that. This parent, many other parents, when he brought us and said, oh, the school is bleeding money, the superintendent, Raydale Houston, confirmed in a meeting with my mother that we were not in debt. There are many other archdioceses and schools operating with less than 200 students when compared the, the enrollment grades that St. Rita had. But how can I expect him to care about black and brown kids? When do we stop normalizing bad behavior? If any one of you posted on your social media pages, one of the posts that he did, you wouldn't be in your leadership position today. And that is a fact. So he's tried to stifle me. The community, we have been protesting since May. He comes out, I hold up a sign, my dad has it, says racism is a sin, complicit behavior is wrong. Why are we being denied opportunities to others? Why won't our pastor talk to us? Why are we being ignored? He comes out and does this. You keep it up, Kim. You keep it up. Where is the concern in priority for black Catholic elementary schools? He has shown none. But the priest that we had before that was outstanding. Every kid, every parent, every grandparent knew who he was. He was involved. He was engaged. He would cancel mass. I don't even know how many times he actually went into the school. Many parents, the night of the parents' meeting, challenged him on this. And we asked him, Raydale Houston said, listen, no matter what the situation is with the school, if he wants it to remain open, it'll remain open. We asked him, would you reconsider? No, I won't. Why? Because his concern is of other priorities, in my opinion. So why then are we going to allow another generation of kids as we talk about the, the crime and the emotional trauma and the mental state? He ripped us from our school family. We have been at that school longer than he's been a priest. Where was the training for him to even lead a school, much less a school of black and brown kids that he cares nothing about? If you'd like to see the presentation, I know it's too late to submit it now, but when I brought up the concerns, he deleted his Facebook profile. And once he deleted it, that's when he disenrolled my kids. Now, how is that right? How are we nurturing the kids of the next generation? At what point are we going to stop bad behavior, complicit behavior? We've got to call it out when it's wrong. You wouldn't want that to be that type of effect for your kids. My first grader, every day has something to say about Patrick Carr. My seventh grader, who has been in St. Rita's since kindergarten, now she's in a totally different school, which I am so appreciative that they have welcomed them. But our kids are scattered all over. I can show you in my phone, text messages, emails of parents, teachers, kids, the struggle that is happening. All of you have the power to make that change. Because if it stays on at a school, then let's make it a school again. That's all I have. Any questions? I'm a little cottonmouth. Sorry. I'm going to get some water. That's okay.
Thank you so much. Any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time to talk and express your frustrations.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank y'all for listening.
Um, the applicant now has time for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to just make it brief and address some of the things that I heard here. We'll start in reverse order. The last two speakers discussed the decision to close the school. You know, that may be an unfortunate situation, but really, you know, I, I'm sorry, but that's just not relevant to the zoning change we're requesting today. You know, the issues between a pastor and, and students of a school are, are issues between them. And I'm, I'm just not going to get into that. Suffice it to say, I have a different opinion of it. The traffic issues that were mentioned by one of the neighbors, Wamsley Avenue is being, I live on Wamsley Avenue, 7842. It's being torn up to replace infrastructure as part of the city's plan. In front of my house, there's a 30-foot hole that I've been watching for three weeks where they're completely redoing drainage. You know, that, that has nothing to do with the traffic in the neighborhood. I'm sorry, sorry to say that, you know, I'm pretty unhappy about it too, but I'm hoping it's, it's complete soon, like a lot of our residents. Additionally, I just want to point to the staff's report. The staff recommended denial. But, you know, one of the things in their report in section 13 subsection G, they state that this change is likely to, to reduce traffic in the neighborhood. We also believe that to be the case. You know, 160 students, whatever it might have been prior to, we expect maybe 30, at most, 30 people to, to be in this office building per day, many of which are, are not full-time employees and wouldn't be there every day anyway. So additionally, I'll point to the staff report, we have 60-plus off-street parking spaces that we intend to be able to utilize. There's only 20 required. So we're 40 in excess of what's required. That's in the staff report. Again, off-street parking, traffic, those types of things, I just don't see it. We don't see that as being an issue. We've heard from the neighbors. We're going to address that. One of the other neighbors mentioned, you know, this being about money. Well, you know, that's, you know, sometimes things are about money, but this is not driven primarily by profit. St. Rita's, just like any other church, has to be able to keep its doors open. Being able to reuse this property for Catholic ministries and also receive some revenue to keep the parish, to sustain the parish and be able to sustain the building for reuses is, is important. It's important for economic reasons for anyone, just as, as it is for the church. One of the other comments I heard was, there was one meeting. There were not, there were, there were actually two meetings. One with the entire Neighborhood Association prior to the NPP meeting. That meeting was on July 12th. There was a second NPP meeting, which we noticed in accordance with the requirements that was held on July 21st. I also met with the neighborhood, on behalf of St. Rita's, met with the Neighborhood Association at their next scheduled board meeting, and one other subsequent meeting. So that's in total four meetings. The, the, the bottom line is, you know, we're, we've been here to hear out the neighbors and, and we've tried to do the best we can to do that. Any questions?
I have a question. The staff is recommending denial of this project. What are the other alternate solutions that you have?
At this point, St. Rita's has no alternate plans for the building. You know, look, it's zoned RD1. Anybody, if, if the building's going to sit, sit vacant as what we've heard, you know, the neighbors have expressed the concern of that. They mentioned Canal Villery back in, you know, on the corner of, of Carrollton and Claiborne, you know, it sat vacant forever. You know, the, the bottom line is, we have, the, the parish, my client, has absolutely no plans. This, this adaptive reuse allows them to utilize the building in its existing form without any changes to the exterior other than beautification, landscaping, striping, what are, you know, bicycle racks, those things that are required. So it, it's, it's a fit for the parish. It allows the ministry of the neighborhood to continue. It brings in Catholic charities, which also provides community-based services. It brings in the cemetery's offices, which provide services to the community as well. School food and nutrition services, which provides nonprofit services to all the schools in the city, all the Catholic schools. You know, again, it's, 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 it's a good fit. I'm not going to speak to the economic realities of the parish and whether they can keep the doors open or not. That's, you know, between the parish and its administration.
Sorry. I do understand that you don't have another plan, but I am surprised that you don't have another plan since this is a monetary decision. There must be another plan to either lease the building out, because what the zoning allows is for multiple uses that are beyond what you will be using it for, beyond the lifetime of your use. So that is what we're really discussing today.
Yeah. So let, let me address that. Two things. One, One, we, again, we selected the most restrictive use, and then we asked for, we're asking for a conditional use above that 5,000-square-foot limitation. So, you know, if someone were to come in and ask for a change, they would more than likely, for a commercial use of an office space that was different from what we're proposing, they'd have to come back and ask for a change if we sold the building, right? So that was purposeful, to put that back, to limit the use to here, you know, in consultation with the neighbors. The second thing, and I haven't mentioned it, but I will, is that we have agreed to put in a negative predeals servitude that restricts some of the more commercial uses that the neighborhood had concerns with. That was discussed with the Neighborhood Association. We've submitted that, and it's been vetted by the Neighborhood Association and something that we've discussed and are committed to doing. So, but, I mean, to answer your question, the school closed, what, in June? You know, and we're here in November. This was a use that came about by virtue of the archdiocese selling a building that housed these other offices. It was brought to St. Rita's because of the location of St. Rita's within two blocks of the main office building of the archdiocese. From my understanding, that it was brought to St. Rita's to say, hey, you know, would this work for you? So there hasn't been any other alternative. I know of no others. It's zoned RD1. It's pretty limiting, you know, what you can do with that building in RD1. It's pretty limited. We have a charter school on the corner of Wamsley and Carrollton. There's St., there's Dominican, and there's, you know, there's several schools reused by as a school for the archdiocese, or the parish is not in the cards. And so, you know, what do you do with that building?
Question for staff. On the conditional use portion of this, is there, is there a way to insert a proviso, providing for a negative predeals servitude that would prohibit the negative impact uses that are concerned of concern?
So I don't believe you would need to do a negative predeals servitude. The proviso itself should suffice for restrictions on the property?
So our understanding in speaking with the staff was, and this was discussed, was that...
Sorry. Does anyone want to?
That's okay. I would like to hear your answer, but what you were talking about would be in addition to the proviso. Is that correct?
Correct. It would be a document that would be self-imposed restrictions on behalf of the owner of the parish. St. Rita's owns the church across the street, so it can use that as the dominant state. The serving estate would be this, would be the school. There were several concerns that we heard from the neighbors. We proactively put that together. I spoke with staff, Stephen Kroll in particular, about this. And my understanding was that we couldn't impose restrictions through the, through the zoning, potentially on the conditional use, we could. But we were encouraged to look at other options. The servitude was the way that we best felt to do that, legally speaking. Building restrictions didn't work. So we've looked at it, and that's kind of where we've gone with it. By the way, as to the provisos, there were three or four that the staff recommended in the event that you recommend approval, and it's approved by the council level. We're fine with all of those provisos that are in the staff report.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Please.
What, you said you've already recorded?
No.
You have not recorded?
We've drafted it and submitted it to the Neighborhood Association for comment. We've revised it after meetings with Neighborhood Association and have committed to recording it with an approval.
But it's not recorded now?
Correct.
What are the, what are the provisions of it as of the moment? What are the things that it prohibits?
Multi-family residential was one. The neighbors were concerned about a large-scale, multi-family residential use here. I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I should have brought that document with me. There was concern about the, you know, doubles to dorms-type things, so we addressed that in it. I can't think of the other. There was one other issue that they were concerned about that we also addressed.
Okay, but it's not recorded yet. It's not recorded or agreed on yet.
It was agreed on in principle with the Neighborhood Association and their board. The final one, I believe, had to do with additional commercial uses and other than what we've proposed today.
I have one more question. And this, this may be for school administration, and it has actually no, it's not in context of whether or not the school, the decision-making that went on, whether to close the school or not. It's more or less a question about impact. What was the population of the school at the time of closure?
173, 173 students.
So that was, it was quite a...
It was a large school. And, you know, for the size of the school, at 40,000 square feet, yes, that's a fairly large number of students.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Was there any Plan B for another school to lease out that was outside of the archdiocese?
No, and, you know, that I know of. You know, I know that there have been charter schools that have leased closed schools. I know of none at the moment that have, you know, expressed interest, but frankly, I'm not sure that the parish would want to lose the use of this building. Part of what is really important to the parish is the 8,000 square feet of community space, both the kitchen and the Moro Center. And, you know, this reuse allows the parish to keep those 8,000 square feet, which are integral within the school. And if it were leased out, would more than likely be part of a school use. So, you know, it's, beyond that, it's also, you know, beneficial to be able to, you know, for continuity of parish use purposes and community use purposes, to be able to maintain control of it.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for your work on this.
Is there any question for staff or a motion?
Can staff confirm that this is the least restrictive zoning?
This is the most restrictive zoning.
Thank you.
I'll add to that also, that if the applicant wanted to request a conditional use to have specifically a community center, that would be an option without needing a zoning change. And a place of worship as a principal use is allowed to have some amount of ancillary office use as a permitted use as well.
Good question. Also, would it be possible, is my microphone on? Yes. To require the recording of this restrictive document for usage before taking any action? I mean, I'm reading one letter following NPP that, you know, the neighbors overwhelmingly would like to see a legally binding written limitation on the use of this property, which will prevent the uses that are allowed by the new zoning and not intended by the parish currently, and not desired by the neighbors. So, you know, what we heard is an intention, but not something legally binding. I'm, this may be a question for, legal question? Can we require? Can we require a stipulation here, if we were to vote in favor of it, that they would need to record restrictive document?
So I would, I don't know if there's any authority in the zoning ordinance to allow for, I mean, it's, I would liken it to a neighborhood agreement, where it's a, an agreement between private entities that is not something that is typically addressed through zoning. So I think I've...
It's like an apartment agreement.
Generally recommended that those types of agreements not be made part of provisos, just because that would put the city in a position of having to enforce something that it's not a party to.
Right, I understand, thank you.
Sabine, could you just say again, repeat about the community centerpiece instead of the zoning docket?
Yeah, I was just making a note that since I heard that, yeah, like, one of the proposed use, in addition to offices that are affiliated to the church use, was a community center. A community center is a conditional use in the HURD1 district. And my other, my other point was that places of worship are permitted use in residential district and are allowed some, the office use as part of the operation of a church. Now, the amount of offices used that is proposed here may not be possible under, you know, the simple place of worship plus ancillary uses, and that would be a determination that needs to be made by safety permits.
So that designation would not include a component that would allow a commercial lease to take place with another unrelated third party?
No, because it would have to be owned by, by this present owner, by the Catholic Church.
Are there any other questions for staff or a motion?
And just to confirm, it's St. Rita that actually owns the property, not the Catholic Church? So we could apply for that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm prepared to make the motion. The move that we deny this application is recommended in the staff report. My primary reason for doing this is that it's not, this is a massive zoning change. And while it's strategically a good move for the Catholic Church, I think that it would be appropriate to explore more neighborhood-appropriate solutions for the use of the building in this, without clear restrictive limits on what it could be done with it in the future.
Commissioner Lund made a motion, Commissioner Jordan seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is there? So the option that Sabine was mentioning would have to come through another applicant, separate application, as a solution to the problem here?
For the community center portion, yes. It would require a conditional use process. The place of worship with associated ancillary use would be permitted by right. And to respond to your question earlier about the ownership, the place of worship definition states that it is a structure, together with accessory structures and uses, where persons regularly assemble for religious purposes, religious instructions, and related social events, which is maintained and controlled by a religious body. It doesn't state that it has to be owned by a religious body, so...
So it could be this, it could be within this application to do that? And is that...
Yes, it wouldn't even need to be part of this application, because a place of worship is permitted by right in this zoning district.
Okay, question for legal then. So if this is denied, this will still be an option open to St. Rita's to keep this as a community center? And because it's a place of worship, have associated offices in there as they wish, which is what this application appears to be about? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the only gray area is that it states that a place of worship can have associated accessory structures and uses, which can include offices and other community uses. But I think safety and permits would have to determine, have to look at the specific proposal, and what is the amount of office use and community use? And does it still legally fit under the definition of a place of worship? Or is it really something more than that at that point?
Thank you.
So I have a question. Safety and permits would have to make that recommendation, but say that we denied this, and then they, the applicant goes ahead and does a conditional use permit. Would that have to be then addressed before this goes to city council? Because we are only a recommending body, just want to make that clear to everybody. We recommend, and then city council has the final say. So I'm just thinking about the timeframe of that. So if we deny today, if that's what the commission chooses, then what is the process for the applicant to go through the conditional use? And is that before they'd have to go to city council?
Or it would be a completely different conditional use application, I believe, so...
Yeah, regardless of what the action of the CPC is, this will be transmitted to the council, and they'll receive it and act on it within the time period spelled out in the zoning ordinance. If they were to choose a separate application, then that would go on its, it would depend on when it's submitted. And so, but the time period would not allow for a separate application to be submitted, reviewed, and go through to approval between now and the time that the council would be acting on this application.
Thank you. Commissioner Lund, would that change your motion at all? Just because you had shared that it was such a large zoning change.
So you're saying if it was resubmitted, wait.
If they had to go through the conditional use process to make it a community center instead of a zoning change?
But that would be a whole different application. Yeah, we'll look at it differently then, but for this current application, it doesn't change.
Okay.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Lund. It's not on here. Was there a second? Oh, it's Commissioner Jordan, that's right. So if there's no further discussion, is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. I just don't see it up here yet. Motion denied, passes. Next up is zoning docket 7822.
Zoning docket 7822 is a request for a zoning change from an SRS suburban, single-family residential district to an SRD suburban, two-family residential district for a property located at 1601 Elizardi Boulevard. Subject property consists of two lots of record, lots 25 and 26, that are currently vacant and have previously contained a single-family residence that had become blighted and was demolished in 2014. Although these lots do not meet the minimum lot standards for a single-family residence in the current SRS district, Article 25, Section 25.5b states that the existing legal non-conforming lots, such as these, would still be able to be developed with single-family residences. The applicant proposes to develop each lot with two-family residences, a use that is not permitted within the site's current SRS zoning that only allows for single-family residential development. Rezoning of this property to an SRD two-family district or any other district would be considered a spot zone and would have to meet the standards set forth in the commission's historic non-conforming use policy. The policy requires the petition site to be consistent with the master plan. However, the proposed zoning change is inconsistent with the master plan. Additionally, the proposal is inconsistent with the approval standards for a zoning change found in Article 4, Section 4.2. E. Therefore, the staff recommends denial of the request.
Thank you. I have one card for Eric Temple.
Yes.
Hi, if you could just say your name and address, please?
Eric Temple, 20, what is it, 102 Mandy Drive, West Weagle, Cali, I mean, West Weagle, Louisiana.
Sure, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Right now, the lot is a, I sort of, a dumping field. Right now, the, the lot is a, I sort of a dumping field, and my plans is to build a multifamily house there. And
Were you able to look at the report that staff sent? Because basically, okay. Basically, the report identifies that in that particular area, you're only allowed to build a single family, you're not allowed to build multifamily. So that's why the report is currently shown as being in denial of your request, because it just doesn't comply with the standards for that particular area.
Okay, we're on a block that have 14 other houses that's multifamily.
Okay. Can staff talk to that?
Yes, when, using the term multifamily, I think he was probably referring to two-family. But there are, on adjacent squares, there are two-family dwellings that are also within the SRS, single-family zoning. I think that this area may be the subject of a master plan amendment. However, you know, this particular lot has a history of single-family residential development. And also, you could, I don't know if you can see on the map there, the, the commission and the council did approve a spot zone to SRD a block away, but that was for a two-family dwelling.
Excuse me, that's what it is, a two-family.
Okay.
Just intentions.
Thank you.
I have a question for Paul. Did you say this may be, you anticipate that this may be the subject of a master plan amendment in our upcoming?
Yes.
Master plan revision? And to make it more consistent, the zoning more consistent?
Well, this whole area, a small area, but several squares used to be zoned to family, and when the new zoning ordinance was adopted in 2015, it became single-family, which was based on the master plan, which had been adopted in 2010. However, there are a lot of non-conforming two-family dwellings in this single-family district.
Question for us, because you just plan on building one double on this lot? Like, that's your intentions or what's the actual intention?
One right now, and then in the future, build another one.
So you want to sell the ladder lot and build two multifamily homes?
Yeah.
On each lot?
Yes.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
When was that spot zoning approved? Do you know that? I know you have a vault of information.
I would say it was last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. I don't have any other cards. There's no one to speak in opposition or anyone, any other proponents. Close the public speaking portion and looking for a motion.
All right, Madam Chair, as, as we look at this picture, it looks like the area that needs some type of development. And also hearing from the speaker about developing two multifamily. Although I appreciate staff's recommendation based on the rules of the master plan, at this time, I'd like to move for approval of zoning docket 7822. Paul, is there any other provisos that should be included? If we go against staff recommendation on this?
No, this is a zoning change, so no provisos.
All right, so I would approve of zoning the docket 7822.
I'll second, and I, I do not like to go against staff's report grant spot zoning, but I agree with Commissioner Stewart, and will cite that this is an area in need of development. And for my purposes, it is consistent in that it is going to the health, safety, and welfare communities. So that would be my reason for going against staff's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll vote our machines. Motion to approve passes. Next up, zoning docket 7922.
Zoning docket 7922 is a request by Kathleen Horn for a zoning change from HMR3 to an HCM1 in the 3rd Municipal District bounded by Charter Spain, Decatur, and Mandeville at 2438 2440 charters. The site is currently improved with one-two-story multi-use building which sits on the corner and with the ground floor corner-facing storefront. Currently, the applicant is operating a specialty restaurant in the building described on licensing as a cafe with pastries, breakfast and lunch, coffee, drinks, and free Wi-Fi selling local artwork. The structure is currently zoned HMR3. It is also in an RDO1 overly district that allows specialty restaurants to operate. The applicant is seeking to change the zoning in order to convert to a specialty restaurant, I mean, a standard, a specialty restaurant into a standard restaurant, particularly in order to obtain an ABO permit and sell alcohol. This cannot be done under the current residential zoning, so the commercial zoning is being sought. The rezoning of this property to an HMC1 Historic Mariny Tremé-Beywater Residential District would be considered a spot zone and would have to meet the standards set forth by the commission's historic non-conforming use policy. The petition, the petition property meets all standards within a historic non-conforming use policy criteria, which identifies the property as a historic commercial property. In addition, while the surrounding development of the immediate neighborhood is residential in character, there are several commercial properties within two blocks as well as immediate surrounding neighborhood exhibiting a history of non-residential use. Therefore, the staff is supporting a, a zoning change to an HMC1 Historic Mariny Tremé-Beywater Commercial District.
Thank you. I have no cards for this docket. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in support or in opposition? Oh. Please come up. Just say your name and address and answer a question.
My name is Sarah Nae. I'm the attorney for Kathleen Horn. I reside at 2136 North Rampart. She resides at 2433 charters across the street from this property. It's, it's just a little neighborhood restaurant, and my neighbors all want to be able to have a cocktail when they come to the restaurant. We're a very small restaurant. I had a bigger restaurant and had a mini-stroke, so I wanted to go a little smaller and don't intend to expand this at all, since there's no room. I mean, it's just a tiny little restaurant. We'll make Bloody Marys and mimosas, and they're going to be in pitchers. There will be no physical bar because there is no room.
Thank you. And you've had a chance to review, you've reviewed the staff report and.
Yeah.
Great. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for the staff. In this case of spot zoning, what happens once this use, at the end of this use?
What, it would be limited just for, well, go ahead.
So, any use that is allowed under HMC1 would, would be allowed as well. I can look at the list if you would like.
No, I, my question was really, you know, we're allowing alcohol, which is always the concern with neighbors. I mean, we might not think it's a big deal, but it's usually the neighbors who start to complain. So if this restaurant were to, one day, you know, live out, what happens after that? Will the spot zoning?
Yeah, any other restaurant, it, it stays with the, with the property.
With the property.
Yes.
Excuse me, we are not seeking any variance from the current, for this zoning allowed hours of operation, which is from, I think, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, no variation like that. And the, the alcoholic beverage licenses she will be applying for are for a restaurant, not for a bar. And that couldn't be changed, even if she sold the building without further processes and applications by another applicant.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you. Okay, looking for a motion? Questions?
Move to approve for staff's report.
Second.
Thank you. There's no discussion? We will call the question. Motion's approved. Next up is zoning docket 8022.
Zoning docket 8022 is a request for a conditional use to permit a hotel in a CBD5 urban core neighborhood lower intensity mixed-use district. The petition site is located at 610-616 Barone Street, bounded by Lafayette Street, Carondelet Street, and Gerard Street in the CBD5 urban core neighborhood lower intensity mixed-use district. The existing site at 616 Barone Street will be developed as a four-story structure containing a restaurant located on the first floor and is currently used as a commercial short-term rental. The neighboring lot located at 610 Barone Street is undergoing renovations that will be a four-story development. The two buildings combined will offer a total of 46 guestrooms and 17 units. The staff believes that the hotel and commercial use are consistent with the zoning goals of the CBD5 district and the master plan's future land use goals. The master plan and the CBD5 zoning district both consider a mix of residential and commercial land uses, including visitor-serving uses such as hotels. While staff is concerned about the overall effect of an over-concentration of hotels and other commercial uses in the CBD5 district, because it would go against its intent of providing a lesser concentration of commercial uses than in other CBD districts, it does not find that the addition of this particular hotel would significantly affect the ratio of commercial uses to residential uses in the district in a way that is contrary to the purpose of the district. It should also be noted that the hotel is approvable under the pending revisions to the regulations for hotels in the CBD5 district, which the commission endorsed at its September 27th meeting. Those regulations limit hotels to one per block face, do not allow for the conversion of residential structures, restrict the number of hotel rooms to 100, and also encourage hotel development of parking lots. This hotel would be the only hotel in the block face and is not a conversion from a residential use. So it would meet the proposed regulation standards under the pending approval of the City Planning Commission. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of the request, subject to five provisos.
Thank you. I have three cards for the applicant, Gerard Bro.
Actually, Gerard Bro is ceding time to me. I don't want to take in too much time.
Great.
My name is Nicole Bell, address 800 Barone Street, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'd first like to thank staff for their recommendation of approval. I'd also like to thank staff for their thoughtful analysis under the pending revisions for hotels in the CBD5 district. As previously mentioned, staff determined that the proposed hotel is indeed approvable under the pending standards. We respectfully ask for your support. I'm here to answer any questions. The owner and architect are also present to answer any questions that you guys may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have for this docket. Is there anyone here for or in opposition? Not, I'll close the public portion. Are there any questions for staff or a motion?
Madam Chair, there are no further questions. I move for approval for zoning docket 08022. As since staff recommendation with the five provisos listed.
Thank you, that's seconded by Commissioner Alexander. If there's no discussion, I'll call the question. Motion passes. Next up is zoning docket 8122.
Zoning docket 8122 is a request to permit a commercial short-term rental in a CBD5 urban core neighborhood lower intensity mixed-use district, the multimodal pedestrian corridor mixed-use overly district, and the residential short-term rental interim zoning district. The request also includes the rescission of ordinance number 17249, which was zoning docket 6195. The applicant is seeking to enable the use of the property as a commercial short-term rental. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing structure. The proposed commercial short-term rental use is compatible with the character of the neighborhood, meets the standards of approval in Article 4 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and is consistent with the master plan. It should also be noted that under the pending revisions to the regulations for hotels and commercial STRs in the CBD5 district, which the commission endorsed at its September 27th meeting, this property would not be eligible for use as a commercial short-term rental. Those regulations allow commercial short-term rentals only in buildings containing at least 10 dwelling units. The structure, which has two units, does not meet that threshold. However, these, these regulations are not yet law, so the staff is not applying them in the evaluation of this application. We recommend approval, subject to five proviso.
Thank you. I have one card. Sarah Seeger.
Hi, good afternoon. Sarah Seeger, 4164 Canal Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70119. Here on behalf of the owner and applicant, Adrian Properties LLC. We are in support of staff's recommendation here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about both conditional use applications.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? No, okay, thank you. The only card I have. Is anyone else here to speak on behalf or in opposition of this docket? Any questions for staff or a motion?
Just to clarify, so when a conditional use is requested, we're looking at whether it enhances the intent of the master plan and the zoning in the neighborhood, correct? And we know that we have a pending proposal for only short-term rental conversions only for 10-plus units in this district, right? So I think we've already established that, that a smaller number of unit buildings converting to short-term rental does not contribute to the character that's desired in the area. Unless I'm misunderstanding intent of conditional use.
I mean, it has not yet been approved by city council, correct?
No, it's pending city council.
Right, I think that's why they're allowing it now, is because it has not yet been approved by law. If this comes to us in, in one month, the answer would be no.
So I'll follow up on that. So Sabine, I think the question was, do we have? It's tough that, it's kind of tricky, because if it came to us in a month, the answer would be no. Do we have the authority to say no? And what are the factors that we're supposed to consider? If the ordinance before the city council is for the, as Commissioner Lund said, the welfare of the neighborhood, et cetera, are we allowed to consider things like that in the absence, before the city, the council has acted on the ordinance? Are we, are we allowed to?
Well, I think mostly when previous requests like this have been submitted in the past, while most of them have been recommended for approval, others might have been recommended for denial, depending on just case-by-case basis. So it's not out of the question to go against our recommendation.
And then, and so why did staff in this particular instance decide to recommend approval? Just so we can understand how staff weighed the factors.
So I think because of the lack of standards that we have until at this point, we have pretty much regularly recommended approval of those requests. They tend to always be dealing with existing buildings that not know new constructions, so not having much impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And while the CBD5 talks about requiring less of a commercial, commercial intensity than other CBD district, we don't have any specific threshold to determine what is, or what is not appropriate, what number is or what is not. So seeing as it's still a central business district, we just feel like a commercial use is appropriate.
So facts and circumstances are not necessarily different here than they will be for any other applicant that we would see, that we would see if this were under the current.
Yeah, under the, the new regulation.
Yeah, under the, the new regulation will require commercial short-term rental will only be able to be approved if the existing building has at least ten dwelling units and the intent is that some of those dwelling units will have to be used for inclusion or reselling for affordable housing, so, which is not the case here.
Right.
So that case will not be able to be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. I do think that this is a low-intensity, short-term rental unit with a commercial use in the first floor, which is what we like in a mixed-use district. That's something I do like about this, all the plans that I went through and saw. So I feel that this is something that we want to see in CBD five. Is that a motion?
I can make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Whitree is seconded. Is there any discussion? Not. I will call the question. Next up is zoning docket eighty-two twenty-two.
Zoning docket eighty-two twenty-two is a city council motion to amend zoning dockets one oh one twenty-one, which granted a conditional use to permit a vocational educational facility. The petition property is a large vacant lot close to the intersection between General de Gaulle Drive and the Intracoastal Waterway and adjacent to the abandoned Taltinger Mall. In twenty twenty-one, the applicant was granted a conditional use to operate a truck-driving school on the site. The development plan only included the installation of a small office classroom building would remain as is to allow the maneuvering of trucks. Design deficiencies were noted by staff at the time that we considered that zoning docket and we recommended revisions to be made to the final plans. The present request is asking to consider waivers of those requirements, including landscape required, building design requirements, and setback requirements. Staff finds that the request fails to meet five of the nine standards for approval of bearings, mainly because the site is a large undeveloped lot, which does not present any physical hardship to meet the applicable building setback, building design, and landscaping requirements. Since the site could be redeveloped in virtually any way possible, the basis for the requested waivers is preference and convenience rather than physical hardship. Therefore, we recommend denial.
Thank you. I have no cards. This is a city council motion. Are there any questions or a motion? Staff's report is for denial of a waiver of convenience for five of the nine?
I'll move in accordance with staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Seeger made a motion. Commissioner Jordan seconded. If there's no discussion, let's vote on machines. Motion to deny is approved. Motion is approved of denial. Next up is subdivision docket one fourteen twenty-two.
Good afternoon. Subdivision docket eleven fourteen twenty-two is a subdivision of two lots, lots one and two located at the corner of Saint Maurice Avenue and North Robertson Street into lots one dash A, one dash B, and one dash C. This request is being reviewed according to Article Five, Section five point one point B, eight, reversal of lot frontage, as this application represents a reversal in lot frontage from Saint Maurice Avenue to North Robertson Street. The subject properties are located within an H U R D two-two family residential district. In general, the subdivision regulations discourage changes in lot frontage because of a concern that street orientation of the new lots will be dissimilar to the existing lot pattern. However, this proposal is arguably an improvement to the existing site. In the lower ninth ward, lots face each other or face the four streets around the square. In this case, the proposal would replace two compliant rectangular lots facing Saint Maurice Avenue with three new compliant lots with frontage along the existing side yard road, North Robertson Street. As the subdivision would create three new compliant lots, this can be considered consistent with the future land use map and the current master plan. The lots can be developed as residential or any other compliant use without an unusual or peculiar circumstance or condition to the land. Therefore, staff recommends approval of subdivision one fourteen dash twenty-two.
Thank you. I have one card. Ron Ward.
Ronald Ward, seventeen thirty-seven Desiree Street. Here with KWC Construction, we're partners. We purchased this lot and we figure we have better use if we can subdivide it into three lots instead of building two duplexes. We can build three. The good-sized lots. Our goal, we have two additional lots, well, actually four additional lots on Saint Maurice that we intend to develop to. And we're not asking for, you know, any complicated changes. We're just shifting the lots. This survey is not the correct survey. We originally wanted to do four lots, but the lot sizes before are not enough square footage and we're not trying to really, you know, go against the grain. We just want to build a duplex. So if we can do three, three works for our plan. That's, that's it in the nutshell.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Is the, the line, the dotted line?
The dotted line, if you look at the bottom, is a thirty, it was a thirty-foot lot and a sixty-foot lot front of Saint Maurice. And both of those lots were big enough for duplexes. What we're doing is we're, we're shifting it. I think in the report, the actual current survey with three lots is that because it's three forty-foot lots that front on, on North Robertson, not four like that one. It's, I think if you scroll up in the report, the.
I think the wrong survey was mistakenly added in there. Originally, the applicant submitted the survey, which proposed four lots. I pointed out to him that the lots were deficient in lot area and would need to go to CPC and get waiver from BZA and that if he was to propose three lots that are compliant in size, we would still need to go to CPC because of the reversal of lot frontage, but there wouldn't be any deficiencies in the lot, so that survey is.
Yes, so it's actually.
An error, yeah. There's three lots proposed.
Three lots. That's one A, one B, and one C, and they all have forty-foot frontage on, on Robson.
Yeah, we have, the report shows the correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of staff recommendation with modified approval and one waiver.
Seconded by Commissioner Seeger. If there's no discussion, we'll call the question. Motion passes. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Next up, a few street name changes versus zero zero two twenty-two.
Street name change zero zero two twenty-two is a request by council member Eugene Green for a name change for the entirety of Higgins Boulevard, point eight miles between Almanaster Avenue and Alvar Street to Carver Rams Way. The change is proposed as a way to honor the mascot for George Washington Carver High School and would affect approximately twenty-eight lots of record. The request went before Planning Advisory Committee on September fourteenth, during which most members objected to the change primarily because of the precedent for naming streets for schools or institutions, since the locations of schools or institutions can change over time, making the renaming less significant. Staff recommends modified approval of the request, modifying the name to Rams Way instead of Carver Rams Way because there is already a Carver Street. If approved, this would require a waiver of criterion one.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff or motion?
I have a question. What has staff found to be either the good effects or the bad effects of changing only portions of streets? We did that many, many years ago. I forgot where. And there was concern expressed about a street is X up until the twenty-eight hundred block and then it's Y and then it goes back to X in the twenty-two hundred block. And there was concern about, you know, nine-one-one calls and things like that. Has there been any look into? Has that caused problems? What has been the effect of naming, renaming only parts of streets?
We don't have any data on emergency calls, but the Orleans Parish Communications District does continue to state that, that concern about fragmenting street names and also sort of partial duplication of street names, in this case with their already being a Carver.
I would just add, this particular application of the three is the one that does have the entirety of the street proposed. The other two, I think our staff, staff report reflects the concern about the partial, the partial.
I was jumping ahead, sorry.
And this is strictly to make it about the school mascot? That's the only implication here? I mean, the only, okay.
That's what we understand, yeah.
There was no, there was no reason to rename Higgins as it was.
There, there is actually an Andrew Higgins in the.
Right, but I'm not saying, this is not part of what the Street Naming Commission was addressing.
No.
With, with their, you know, their evaluating criteria of who to, to unnamed and who to, to name. So this strictly was just, okay.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for modified approval, to recommend modified approval of this application as recommended by the staff.
So Madam Chair, is it too late to ask staff another question since there's a motion on the floor?
Please go ahead.
So what is staff, so there is a concern that I, I don't know how many schools there are in the city of New Orleans, but if every school wanted to name a street or a portion of a street after their mascot, what's to stop every other school from saying, how about me?
Yeah.
Or, or what is, how did staff weigh though? That was a rhetorical question you do not have to answer. But what are the factors? Did you consider that as a factor and what's staff's evaluation of that issue?
So it came up during the Planning Advisory Committee. We didn't do an analysis of the number of schools and, and what that could look like long-term if there was an interest of a lot of institutions and schools. But that was one of the reasons the Planning Advisory Committee objected to this change is just for the precedent that that may set. In our criteria, we actually take a look at sort of the name, but we don't really evaluate the worthiness of the name itself. And, and the honorary street study, street renaming study that was done in twenty fifteen suggested that the CPC staff really takes sort of the worthiness of those names out of their review criteria and, and really look at the safety issues around the name. We also recommend the honorary process.
What process?
The honorary street naming process.
Just, okay, in honor of. I'm not sure what that is.
So there's, there is a, a number of years ago, we were asked to study an alternative to a permanent name change and do an honorary street name. So you've seen them in probably other cities where it'll, you know, New York has a ton of them, Chicago has a ton of them, where the street addresses will stay the same because the street stays Fifth Avenue or, but there's an honorary, there's an honorary name assigned to particular blocks where whatever is being honored will be identified with that block, but it won't be the address for the residences or for the businesses on that block. And so that was adopted by the city council. Those particular, those types of applications would not come through the CPC because it's really just looking at the name and not the kind of ancillary land use implications of changing a street name. So that's why we would recommend, and certainly if we get applications to rename portions of streets, that's the, the recommendation that we're generally going to come forward with is this may be a better candidate for a honorary street name change so that we're not compartmentalized or, or cutting up street names for emergency first responder purposes.
Just a quick question to staff about the, the addition to, to, of Ram. Was there any feedback or, you know, has the public?
So the change from Carver Rams Way to Rams Way, and that's what the modification is suggesting. And the reason for that is because there's already a Carver Street that exists. We haven't heard any feedback from Councilmember Green's office about that change.
Thank you. Okay, do we still have, is there still a motion? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. We'll vote on machines. Motion passes.
Okay.
Missing two.
Sorry, my vote is no. I didn't weigh in with my comment, which is addressing the problems inherent in, in doing this. I think it's, it's not something commission should be undertaking. Sponsored school naming for willy-nilly here and there and whoever wants it next.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Next is street name change zero zero three twenty-two.
Street name change zero zero three twenty-two is a request by council member Eugene Green for a name change of three blocks of Cadillac Street from Harrison Avenue to Foy Street as Ron Eagle Way is a means to honor the mascot for McDonough Thirty-Five High School. Staff recommends denial of the request because of the fragmentation of Cadillac Street that the renaming would create. Orleans Parish Communications District and Planning Advisory Committee raised concerns that this fragmentation would cause confusions for callers and emergency responders during emergencies. The staff recommends instead utilizing the honorary street naming process, which would keep the physical addresses on Cadillac Street, but would add honorary street signage to pay homage to the Ron Eagle.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Or motion?
I move, I make a motion to go with staff's recommendation.
Seconded by Commissioner Brown. If there's no discussion, we'll call the question. Motion passes. Street name change zero zero four twenty-two.
So we actually received a communication this afternoon from council member Thomas's office that this item get deferred. And that is so the applicant can come, Darius King, who was the representative of the Alfred Lawless High School Alumni Association.
Is that for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So we're looking for a motion for deferral to the October twenty-something.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Just happened to name the date.
Oh.
October 25th.
I'll make a motion for deferral for October 25th.
Seconded by Commissioner Lund. There's no discussion, we'll call the question.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Staff's pleased to give a brief presentation summarizing the capital improvement plan for years 23 to, 2023 to 2027, including the process and responsibilities of the City Planning Commission as outlined by the Charter. The capital improvement plan is a five-year program for expenditures by the City of New Orleans for permanent physical improvements to the city. This presentation, we will provide a summary of expected revenues and recommended capital expenditures, and we will conclude with recommendations related to future capital priorities. The process for the CIP development begins with the Capital Projects Administration assisting city agencies and helping identify capital needs and project scopes. The agencies then send capital project requests to the CPC, and CPC staff holds public hearings with each individual agency. One of the main responsibilities of the CPC is to certify that the approved projects are consistent with the master plan for the city of New Orleans, which can be found in the individual project requests in this report. The overview of the funding sources for this CIP depict a total of approximately $420 million in funding. These funding projections represent a mix of FEMA reimbursements, miscellaneous capital funds, and self-generated funds. Projects that have already received funding in the past years are listed as ongoing projects in appendices one and two. This year, there are no new general obligation bond funds available to be programmed for the upcoming five-year period. The majority of capital funding in 2023 to 2027 is from FEMA reimbursements totaling $285 million, and other funding sources include 500,000 miscellaneous capital funds and 134 million in self-generated funds. The city's most recent bond issuance approved by voters was in 2019 for 500 million in general obligation bonds. 374 million of this was sold in August 2021, and the remaining has yet to be sold. Most of these bonds were recommended in the 2021 to 2025 CIP for various projects, but many of the projects that were anticipating funding will require additional funding to move forward. This is a result of a significant escalation in construction costs in recent years and the reallocation of bond funds to the Orleans Justice Center Phase Three and Agriculture Street Solar Farm and Gordon Plaza relocation projects. There will be a bond sale in the coming years, but the day is uncertain because 80% of the 2021 bond series, bond series must be spent down prior to sale. This slide gives an overview of expenditures by program type, which are program categories the City Planning Commission has used for capital improvement planning in the past. We'll briefly touch on each of these in the following slides. Capital funding for streets includes $285 million in FEMA reimbursements. All of this funding goes through the Department of Public Works and will fund the continuation of the Joint Infrastructure Recovery Request Program. The JIRR is a comprehensive capital program to restore damaged streets and infrastructure citywide. Road repair and reconstruction projects have been based on the comprehensive street evaluation that was completed in 2016. The second largest category for this year's capital improvement plan is for the Louis Armstrong International Airport at approximately 125 million. Now that the new terminal is complete and operational, the remainder of the funds are dedicated to taxiway rehabilitation, runway improvements, and entrance and exit road enhancements. The Aviation Board is also planning to redevelop the former terminal area for aviation uses related to maintenance and repair. This funding comes from general airport revenue bonds, user fees, veteran state grants. The category of other public facilities includes the allocation of approximately 9.8 million. The majority of these funds come from the French Market Corporation and are slated for major repairs to the French Market and the Upper Pontalba Building. Additionally, the staff recommends allocation of the revenue from miscellaneous capital funds in the amount of 500,000 to the Department of Property Management for citywide emergency No new expenditures are projected for public safety facilities, libraries, and museums, or parks and recreation program categories. While no funding is allocated this year for these program categories, 145 projects are currently underway in the Capital Projects Administration portfolio, representing 421 million in investment. These projects are listed in Appendix One of the CIP. I'll wrap up this presentation with some final thoughts on the city's future capital needs. Despite these investments, which have been substantial, the capital funding requests received for the upcoming five-year period highlight a substantial need for reinvestment in the city's infrastructure. This chart shows the city's needs for non-street-related expenses. Recognizing that the city may have the capacity to issue more geo-bonds in the coming years to finance capital projects, the staff has identified several priority areas to consider as potential capital improvement investments if bonds were to become available. This list highlights major common needs presented by requesting departments and identified by staff through the process. The city and the Sewerage and Water Board are continuing to invest FEMA reimbursements to fund streets and stormwater management. The Recovery Roads Program is funded repairs citywide, and the city is starting to make the switch to greener infrastructure. Pervious paving and bio swells are becoming part of the regular street infrastructure throughout the neighborhoods. Funding should continue to be prioritized for the implementation of green infrastructure projects and stormwater management features, including the Gentile Resilience District, which is still in planning phases. Many of the city's public safety facilities are also in need of upgrades due to their age and history of deferred maintenance. While the 2021 CIP recommended approximately 31 million in general obligation bonds to fund public safety facilities, many of these facilities are still in need of repair. The city also owns several large properties that could be used to meet various agencies' needs for records and evidence storage and office space. Two notable examples include the old Veteran Affairs Hospital located at 1601 Perdido Street and the Community Correctional Center Building located at 2800 Gravier Street. Capital Projects Administration has been actively working to program the space within the old VA Hospital, and several city agencies are currently operating within the building. The Community Correctional Center remains vacant as approximately 420,000 square feet of space that could serve numerous agencies and the Criminal Justice Center area around Tulane Avenue and South Broad. The third priority identified by the staff is to invest in existing city buildings and infrastructure. We've received dozens of requests from departments asking for needed renovations to bring their facilities up to a good stage of repair. Common requests include repairing roof leaks, space for record storage, HVAC, and electrical work. The photos presented on this slide are from Criminal District Court, where conditions in some jury deliberation rooms have been in severe need of repair for many years. These conditions not only impact the city's workforce, but also the public as they interact with departments, and have impacted services over the past year with HVAC outages, non-functioning elevators, and other issues that have led to office closures. Finally, the staff recommends working with the current administration to develop housing priorities. The 2021 plan recommended 15 million in general obligation bonds to fund nine sites throughout the city for affordable housing. Some of these projects have started to come through the City Planning Commission for recommendations on zoning and design entitlements, and that includes two projects that have been in front of this commission as affordable housing plan developments. Next steps, the commission will need to adopt this year's CIP at today's meeting, so it can be submitted to the mayor by October 15th, as required by the city charter. From there, the mayor will present her executive capital budget to the city council. The city council will host their budget hearings in the month of November and adopt a capital budget on December 1st. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Vincent Smith, the Director of Capital Projects Administration, in attendance, who is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, the commission?
Where, where are we on the FEMA money? It's been down the $2 billion settlement. I know this is the question I ask every year, but if this is the, the works completed are how much, and the works in progress are how much, and what we have left is 285, so 285 is what's left of the $2 billion, and we've either spent or completed or in process of completing the others?
So, and, and I don't know if Vince wants to chime in on this, but my piece will be Appendix Two. I know in past years, we've had this discussion, you know, do these numbers on roadwork know and do they add up to the full award?
Right.
And they do. So Appendix Two, if you total all those projects, it has the total amounts and it has the phase that these projects are in.
It looked to me that it did. It was updated.
Yeah. I made sure, I made sure that we had it for you this year.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you, Vince. Okay.
I'd just like to ask, any, any information you could provide for us about the status of the Gentile Resilience District? It's been in the planning phase for so long.
I forgot to say good afternoon to the commission. I would have to get that information from you. I'm Capital Projects, and I, you know, I don't get into the weeds of public work, so we can certainly, I can certainly find out.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And along that same line, just very specifically, you'd mentioned pervious sidewalks and, you know, this sort of green infrastructure. Where is that exactly being implemented?
Like, where, where are some of those projects?
Sure, because I don't see any pervious pavement sidewalks.
And, and actually, we featured one of those installations on the cover this year. So I believe this is around Poncharan Park. This is a parking lane that was done with pervious pavers. There are some examples in the Lower Ninth Ward, and I believe at least one street in the CBD, and I'm blanking on the names.
It's just not being used consistently across the city as a, as a standard?
And that's a good question, you know, what, what is the standard? When do they install them in this manner? And I'm not sure of the particulars with expanding FEMA reimbursements or FEMA funding for that, and whether or not that would allow that, or if these are solely for bond projects, which would definitely make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question about process, not, not for capital projects, but just about the process here, and this would be for council. You know, we, we're, this, this starts here because we look at, at, at spending, whether it's a 10-year spend, whether we're going to invest in a 10-year. You know, in the past, I know that we found a few things that we've moved here and there from here to operating, but generally, that's not the case. And also consistency with the master plan. The council has taken up several amendments over the past year that have not come before this body, and I'm just wondering, I know there's a 15-day rule, but, you know, wherever it's being put, it's coming out of somewhere else, and I'm just wondering if the public should have this step, you know? I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that was necessarily going somewhere it shouldn't, it's just, this is part of the process, and I'm wondering why we're never seeing any amendments during the year.
So I'm aware of one request for an amendment, which was in relation to the agricultural lands.
There was, there were a few, I know, on council calendars that were moving, moving from one place to another, so maybe that's something that wasn't required.
So if they're moving funds, I believe that that is, so long as the, the projects are included, there is no amendment needed?
I can help you with that, Bob. One of the things that actually is different in terms of as we've been moving funds, when we did sell the last, in the last bond sale, we set it up so that we could move funds. The projects were placed in categories like, you know, parks, and, you know, in categories. So with this bond sale, we've got the flexibility to move funds from projects as long as they are inside of the categories that they were.
Thank you, Vince.
And just to follow up, the one amendment that I mentioned, it was necessitated because that specific project was not part of the capital improvements plan that you all had adopted. So it had to be, there had to be an amendment, and the time that was available didn't allow you all to have a meeting within that 15-day period.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one clarification, I'd just like to understand that slide that had the French Market Corporation 9 million dollars, and the very last thing it said was something about the French Market Corporation funds. What was the point that was being made on that slide? I missed.
Oh, that, all of the French Market Corporations are self-funded, so all the money that the FMC generates through their operations of the French Market and their various facilities goes towards their budget toward improvements, capital improvements throughout their district.
So they would not be utilizing part of that 9 million? They, they are self-funding?
The 9 million includes their, their own fund.
Oh, so it's just not broken down how much comes, do they?
And I can actually look that up for you. So it is, it's, it's almost that entire amount, so it'd be roughly 9.3 million in proposed capital projects over the next five years in the French Market Corporation.
Okay, so part of the money they generate is also used for miscellaneous capital funds for emergency repairs?
The, the miscellaneous capital funds, those are not usually directed to the FMC. Those are funds that we are, that the city receives from the disposition of property and other various sources like that, and we typically recommend that that money go towards property management's capital budget in order to repair, restore, maintain city buildings.
Okay, so, so the 9 to 5 million that's listed here is what was generated by the French Market Corporation's activities, right?
9.3.
9.3, and it will all be used for the French Market Corporation, or are they funding?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Over a five-year period, so they are projected now.
Okay, thank you.
Is this something that we're looking for a motion to approve? Yes? Sure. There are no other questions on the plan looking for a motion?
Move for approval of the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan draft of the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan, recommendation for approval.
Second.
If there's no discussion, we'll call the question. Draft is approved. Next on the agenda is consideration of rescheduling our first November, our November eighth meeting due to, it's election day, so City Hall is closed, so we're looking to reschedule to November fifteenth?
So we had the conversation as part of our ops meeting, it was on that agenda too.
Sorry.
So the meeting will be on the fifteenth at our regular time, and it'll be at thirteen, forty, Poydrus, on the 21st floor conference room. We'll make sure that the website and everything is updated to reflect that.
Thank you. And then the last is the proposed 2023 regular schedule meeting? Oh.
So the. This is just a prepared schedule for.
Right. Okay. Do you want to just talk about this at the next meeting or do we have to?
I would like, if possible, we could do it today. Basically, second and fourth Tuesday, I think is. What is reflected in our rules.
Correct. And this just follows our normal protocol.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we have to, you know, submit a request to the council for chambers, we have to submit.
Sure.
You know, reserve rooms and all of that.
There's no issue with, with the proposed dates for 2023, I'm looking for a motion, please. Thank you, and if there's no discussion. Over to machines. Great, it's approved. That concludes our business for today, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you, Commissioner Lund.